All right. Hello and welcome everybody to another special edition of our We Talk Tech webinar series, a series that kind of aims to provide you with a real look, you know, into tangible, real-life GIS workflows in Ireland. And let me, yeah, let me kick this one off. You know, you'll probably notice I'm joined by Barry Doyle from Galway County Council and Robert Lockren from Blue Sky International. But let me kick off by just telling you, telling everybody a secret, right? That it's one thing that I've, that I've kind of hated when I was in GIS is these perfectly manicured demos. And what I mean by that is that, you know, it's very soul destroying when you see something, when you see a webinar, when you see like, you know, a great demonstration, a piece of tech, a nice piece of functionality, and then you go to deploy it yourself, you know, and you get really excited. And unfortunately, there's, there's a bit of disparity, I suppose is the correct word, between your reality and expectation that you almost end up like, you know, Homer Simpson when he builds a barbecue and he's looking at the, he's looking at the finished product. He's like, why does mine look like that, you know? So really, I hope what you're going to get from it today is, you know, three organizations, I think, that have, that have heard about reality capture. We've heard about digital twins. We've heard about smart cities. And it's great theory, you know, but like, we've actually decided to just put our money where our mouth is and actually try and build something here, you know, within ArcGIS. We've heard a lot about it, but let's, let's see if we can build something in 3D. And today, you know, to be totally upfront, isn't to showcase this amazingly beautiful finished 3D products, right? It's more about, let's start generating ideas and start having conversations about 3D. I don't think I'm insulting anybody by saying Ireland is a little bit behind our European, other, other European countries, you know, in 3D workflows. And we do have to start somewhere. So why not start here? Why not start with this, this webinar if we've never done, you know, 3D GIS before? Let's start here. You know, I think we're such a small GIS community in Ireland that we almost owe it to each other, you know, to help each other out with learnings, the bottlenecks, you know, we built the 3D model in Athanrae in ArcGIS online that we'll show you later. And but, but half our buildings are submerged because I couldn't get the elevation right, you know? So let's, let's be upfront about it, you know, but we've, we found a way around it, you know, and we'll show you all of it today. But really, it is about giving you an honest look, you know, if you are dipping your toe into 3D GIS, you've heard digital twins, reality capture, smart cities. What's it all about? Like, how can I actually get going with it, you know, and, and why should I care about building a 3D GIS in the first place? So hopefully, we can generate some ideas along the way today. And so without further ado, like I said, I'm joined by Barry Doyle from Galway County Council, Robert Lockren from Blue Sky International. And Barry, we'll come to you first, if that's okay, because this very much started with you, right? So like, yeah, can you tell us all, like, how did you arrive at this idea to start building something in 3D?
Yeah, thanks, Adam. Hi, everybody. So I suppose my starting point was curiosity. And practically about three or four years ago, when I was working in Roscommon County Council, I was just very interested as we were moving into the ArcGIS platform and ArcGIS Pro, key selling point of that was its 3D capabilities. And then with the, what we could do in online in terms of the scenes, building scenes, and, and, you know, the, all the kind of the documentation around that and the use cases. So I remember back then asking Esri Ireland to come up and do a talk for Roscommon County Council. And they did, and we got a bunch of people into the room. And that was that then. Then life took over again. The day job took over again. And nobody was banging down my door with all these great use cases. So kind of parked it for a while. I've since moved to Galway County Council. And curiosity got the better of me again. And that the reason was, was again, the capability was there and it was kind of bugging me that I wasn't doing anything with it. But the other thing was, we were getting more and more 3D data. And so, you know, various different sources of data, Jordan and Survey, of course, and the DTM, you know, we had a lot of LiDAR data just sitting on file, we were doing nothing with. And the other thing is just from a planning point of view, BIM models, emergency services, BIM models. And we were also, I suppose, getting into our heritage section, we were getting a lot of drone surveys carried out with the main aim of creating some high-res ortho imagery. But the other products coming out of that were the DSMs, the DTM's, the 3D meshes, you know, the end products. And so we had all this data and, you know, there's, there's more out there. We just keep finding it. And what I was trying to do was say, okay, I have this 3D data, I have 3D capabilities, I don't know much about, but I'd like to build this world where I can kind of integrate all this data together and see how well it integrates and what we can then do with it. So as kind of Adam was saying, you know, it's not like I had an end product in mind and I now have a shiny end result. And it's really, you know, this is a means to an end. This is just discovering what we can do. Other areas that we were looking at was, you know, the likes of tourism, that our county council has a number of drones. But people are not joining all the dots, putting it all together. So this was an attempt to put things together and see where we could get, you know, there's a lot of talk recently about digital twins, it's become a bit of a buzzword. Previously to that, everything was smart. And we couldn't get away from the terminology of smart. And the big thing of smart was digital twins as well, and being able to view data in real time, analyze it in real time, and so on. So again, we're swamped with data. There's no end to data. And this was really to see, can we start doing anything good with that data? So what I really like is having a kind of somewhere where I can put all this data together, merge it all in together, look at a drone or a 3D mesh that came from a drone survey with a BIM model that came from an architectural firm with, say flooding data, with building data. And so that kind of led to conversations with Adam, because it's quite difficult for us to do this on our own. And Esri, as Adam kind of said, Esri have a lot of good stuff that shows us these shiny end products. But we are left scratching our heads a bit as how to get there, especially with kind of time constraints and resource constraints. So the assistance of, you know, working with Adam and Esri and the partnership kind of approach there has been, you know, critical. And then the other piece of the jigsaw has been me going out and I suppose with my cap in hand, the likes of Robert and saying, Robert, any chance you can give us a bit of data? And then Robert gives me a bit of data. And then I say, well, that's really nice, Robert, any chance you can give me a bit more? And if you wouldn't mind throwing in the tree survey with that too. And, and so, but I think Robert, and he'll talk about it, you know, this gives Robert a chance to showcase what his data can do as well. So it's, it's been a win-win for the three of us. And I live in Athanrae in County Galway. Athanrae is a heritage town, you know, it's a, it's a walled town. It's got a castle, it's got an abbey, it's got a heritage center, it's got old walls going around the town. Our heritage, you know, we were doing graveyard surveys, we got some nice drone surveys carried out by a local company up here in Galway called Impact GIS. And that's another aspect, you know, that's someone else who's given us data. And so where we're, I thought Athanrae is a small heritage town would be an ideal place to look at this. And so that's, that's really what we've done. And, you know, I'm, you know, it's not like I feel that I have an end product, but I feel like I have something that can be built on and that can help stimulate ideas, you know, from, from other people.
Yeah, and that's great. And as far as, you know, like, the urban versus rural setting, I don't think you're going to get much better than, than Athanrae, you know, it really is a good example just to throw everything in. But going back to your point, I suppose, Barry, is like, the one thing when you are getting flooded with data, you know, and we've seen it as well, when we, when we go in and, you know, we get a 3D model, that's just really all it is, you know, most times where you get a Revit model, you stick it in, but everything else around it is 2D. It doesn't really, you know, it's, it's not meaningful. It's meaningful for the building. Yeah, that's great. You know, I can go in and I can, you know, navigate my Revit models, I can navigate my, my textured meshes. And that's fantastic, but it doesn't really give me context of the whole area. And if I'm trying to identify spatial patterns, if I'm trying to figure out, you know, analysis where things are happening, I really need reference points, you know? So I think that's a good segue into, you know, because if you are being flooded by data, we always kind of need, like, when you log into ArcGIS online, you click web map, guess what? The first thing you see is a base map, right? And we need to replicate a base map in 3D, you know, with meaningful information. So this is where I suppose our good friend, Robert from Blue Sky comes in, because if we do have a scenario or a web scene where we have a Revit model, a SketchUp file, 3D textured meshes, digital surface models, that's great, but I can't really see around it. I can't get a good sense of, you know, where things are in Athanrae. It's just, it might as well be in a blank space. You don't need a base map to tell you where a Revit model is, you know? And so I suppose, Robert, is a good segue into Blue Sky and what Blue Sky can offer us when we are being flooded with data in ArcGIS. How do we, how do we make sense of it?
Well, exactly. And I think, you know, the project that we started off with Barry, albeit a smallest project around the town of Athanrae, I think it's a good way to demonstrate just what we can do with 3D data and use it in a meaningful way. You know, there are all of these buzzwords knocking around nowadays about smart city planning and doing everything in 3D. And really, we live in a 3D world and that's the direction of travel. All of these things, you know, so certainly, I think in Ireland, we maybe have been a little bit slow at that kind of starting some of the look at 3D and how we integrate that into, into how we, how we plan and how we operate and how we live. But I think, you know, when the years to come, we're going to see a big, big demand and we're going to start looking at 3D in a very meaningful way going forward, you know? So my plan this morning was just to take you through a very brief presentation. I'm not going to dwell too long on, on much of it, but really just describing on what Blue Sky do, what we can offer, the quality of the services, and just looking at some of the products and things that are out there and available right now in the Irish market. And obviously, we can have a question and answer a little bit at the end, you know? So I'm gonna share my screen, I think. Let's see.
Yep, perfect.
Hopefully you can, is that working, is it?
Yeah, it is.
So just a little bit about Blue Sky. I mean, we're, everybody can see that, you can see it, guys?
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's presenting okay, I think?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we're, we're a specialist mapping company and everything we do is based around accuracy. That's really, really fundamental in terms of what we, what we actually do. We started working in the Irish market, I think, back in 2015, developing what we call the Ireland aerial photography mapping program. That is now complete. We do a lot of 3D modeling, a lot of LiDAR surveys. We're doing huge amount of LiDAR survey for a huge range of applications, coastal management, forestry management, solar and wind farm planning, very big markets right now. Clearly, with the, the crisis in, in the Ukraine, we've got to kind of wean ourselves away from, and get a little bit more independent in terms of energy and so on. So we're seeing a huge demand for solar and wind farm planning and we provide a lot of products for that. I'm not dwell too, too much on those. The project that we commenced back in 2015 to create a very highly accurate ortho photography model for the Republic of Ireland is now complete. We finished that in 2018. And since that time, we've spent a lot of time and effort updating because clearly, you know, from the moment you publish an ortho photo or from the moment you, you, you create a map, it's almost out of date. Someone's building something, someone's changing something. So you've got to keep on top of that update cycle. And albeit, we've got to manage the weather conditions in Ireland aren't always ideal. So, you know, nowadays, we, we plan to keep the update cycle so nowhere is any older than three years old. So we've got complete coverage in terms of high quality ortho photos and elevation terrain data. I'll just look at those. In terms of how we acquire data, we don't use drones. Drones are a fantastic toolset in the geospatial armory. But we use, because we're covering such large areas, drones aren't really suitable, you know, we're typically covering thousands of square kilometers perhaps in a, in a day. So we've got to use robust platforms. And generally speaking, we'll use twin-engine aircrafts. So they're fairly large, with a high endurance aircraft. We use sensors, various types of sensors, some of them are only for producing photography, some of them are combined with LiDAR, some of them also have oblique sensors in them. And for the photography program, we use Vexel cameras. They're a very high-end camera with high-grade IMUs, airborne GPS in them, four lenses, so you've got RGB and color infrared captured simultaneously. And they gyro-stabilized, obviously, and they've got, you know, forward motion component setting. So they're a very sophisticated camera, very efficient. And typically, we can, you know, depending on the resolution, we can acquire perhaps 2000 to 3000 square kilometers of high-quality imagery in a day. And you'll see one mounted there in the, in the aircraft. It's about the size roughly of a, of a small fridge. And they've got about a price tag of about a million euros. You won't get much change from a million euros. So the basis for what we do really relies on high-quality imagery. So there's an awful lot, you know, you probably look at Google Earth an awful lot and you see imagery on there and Google Earth is a fantastic tool. It's, it's great. We utilize it quite regularly. And I guess all of us use it in various applications and in our own home life to travel from A to B, very useful. And some of the imagery in there perhaps hasn't been taken with quality in mind in terms of, a lot of it is satellite image-based, so it's been taken off NADAR. So you get a lot of oblique views, you get a lot of shadowing and that type of stuff. And I'm not knocking it too much, but obviously, when we're going to use the imagery that we acquire for onward processes, such as photogrammetry, such as creating 3D models, it's really important that we utilize the highest quality imagery that we can. So there's an awful lot goes into planning, acquiring imagery, processing imagery, so as we're, we're getting the best quality imagery that we can, we can. And we produce what we call a true ortho photo. So we fly in such a way that we have a very high forward overlap on each photo. So as the camera's looking straight down and we extract the central part of each image, and that, that obviously means that we've got no building lean, we've got no occlusions on the imagery. And you're able to see the whole of the area that you're looking at in very sharp, sharp and clear detail. And that's really important from the point of view of taking that imagery in a stereo photogrammetric mode and creating things like 3D maps, topographic mapping, elevation models and things. Fundamental to what we do is the quality of the, the imagery. Those are just the four products. So we generate from the photogrammetric imagery. So we've got an RGB image layer typically at 25 centimeter across the whole of Republic of Ireland. The majority of cities are available at higher resolutions, with Dublin, Cork, Waterford, et cetera, at 10 centimeter. And then we generate elevation models from that. So DTM, which is a bare earth model where we've stripped off everything that sits on the surface of the earth, sorry, that's the, that's the DTM. So that's the ground model. And then we've got a, a one meter resolution digital surf, surface model. So that contains everything that sits on the surface, tree heights, buildings, roads, bridges, fences, hedges, very, very valuable data set. And that's available for the whole of Republic. That's an example. We actually have that at 25 centimeters. So we do have a 25 centimeter surface model available. It's a fairly large data set. So we typically will merge that up to your, de-resolve it to one meter just to make it a little bit more manageable. But it's a very, very rich data set in terms of what it contains. We have an X, Y, and Z value, so a terrain elevation point for every single point in Ireland. So whether it's a tree, a hedge, a building, wall, all of that has been added to an accuracy of, of better than 50 centimeters. And how do we know that? Because, yep.
Yeah, sorry, Robert, I was just gonna ask, can I ask a really dumb question? We're going in with, you mentioned 25 centimeter resolution. So when I'm looking to acquire a digital surface model or a digital terrain model, and I see one out there for like, it has 30 meters, this is probably not great, right? Like, I'm probably looking to go the lowest. Can you talk a little bit about what that actually means? Because I've seen, you know, this is 3 meter resolution. I'm like, sounds great, but I have no idea what I'm actually looking at, you know?
Yeah, you know, it's a good question. And it brings me on to, 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 to the next couple of sites, I guess, Adam. And resolution, I think, is key. So what, what I've done here is I've shown a couple of examples of what we mean by resolution. And this, what we're looking at on the, on the image now is a two-meter resolution DTM. And by resolution, I mean, the number, the pixel resolution. So we actually have a height value, an X, Y, and Z value every two meters on the ground. And obviously, the higher the resolution that you have, the higher level of detail that you'll be able to determine, and the better modeling that you'll be able to do from it, the more accurate it will be as well. That's provided the resolution of the imagery is congruous with, from whatever it's come from. So you couldn't, for example, take, let's say, an SRTM DTM, which is generally 30 meters, it's developed from the Space Shuttle topology mission some years ago, you couldn't take that at 30 meters and de-resolve it or re-resolve it to five meters, because fundamentally, the accuracy and the fidelity within that isn't there to allow you to do that. I mean, you could take, for example, I can simply take the two-meter DTM that we've generated and create a 25-meter DTM from it. Now whilst it will maintain some of the underlying accuracy and integrity, it will lose a lot of the detail, as you'll see, oh, there. So you see, the two meter version gives you a lot more detail. You're seeing your roads, your bridges, your rivers, your streams, your brake lines, really nice and clear. You'll be able to do modeling, really good, accurate modeling from that, probably at a macro scale, 25 meter, you'll see you start to lose a lot of that definition. Still reasonably accurate, very good for maybe macro planning, if you're planning flood modeling across a whole county, for example, then perhaps the 25 meter version will be suitable. So that shows you some, yeah, some examples of that.
Sorry, Robert, do you provide that as an XYZ file? Or do you provide it as a grid? Or can you provide it as either?
Either. I mean, we're very flexible in terms of formats, because we work with a range of different organizations who do different things, from local authorities through engineering companies. And, and they're all using different packages. So an XYZ would be standard, or an ASCII grid file, an Arc ASCII grid file would be standard, GeoTIFF dot DXF. So all of those types of formats we're very familiar with and we can accommodate most, you know? But standard, the, the most common one would be an ASCII, an Arc ASCII grid format. So, yeah. Just another brief example, and it probably maybe shows it more clearly in terms of the difference between resolution. So the image on the left is a 25 centimeter digital surface model. You'll see there, you have a huge amount of detail. Again, each of these points is represented by an XYZ. So you have your easting, northing, and elevation value, huge amount of detail there. If you resolve that or de-resolve it to two meter, you start to see it breaking up. I mean, you can still see the shapes reasonably clearly, the trees, the buildings, the roadlines and so on, still reasonably good. And then if you take it further out to five meter, it starts to break up again. So that kind of shows you the difference between resolution. And it's important, I think the point is to note that whatever resolution you finally choose, whatever you use to generate that data must be consistent with it. So you can't, for example, use 25 centimeter photography to generate a 10 centimeter model. It's just not going to work. There just isn't sufficient detail in it. So it's important to consider that. I spoke earlier a little bit about accuracy and how do we know that what we produce is accurate? And, and one of the ways we do that is we, we've got to establish independent ground control points. And we spend a lot of time gathering ground control points in Ireland. I'm showing just a few of them there. We've got a lot of supplemental points in between. And these are typically surveyed at three centimeter accuracy. And by independent, I don't mean independent that, you know, we've got somebody else to go and do them. Sometimes we do. But they're independent to the aerial survey. So we can then take the survey data, we can compare them against the control points, and we can say, you know, with the reasonable level of accuracy that we are accurate to plus or minus five centimeters RMSE, plus or minus 12, whatever it may be. So there's a huge amount of effort goes into controlling and the making sure that what we do is, is accurate. Because the bottom line is, we, we work a lot with engineers, engineering companies. And, you know, accuracy is key there. If you're designing a new road or you're looking at a coastal erosion study, you've got to make sure that the input data that you're using is accurate, because otherwise, what will come out the other end is not going to be good. And that's fundamental to what we, what we do. I think I've covered most of those. I mentioned earlier with your surface model, so the two data sets are collected at the same time. So there's no inconsistencies between them. So you've got the imagery, you have the surface model, you know, everything's picked up and they sit perfectly and they align perfectly to one another. Another example of LiDAR, we do LiDAR surveys, huge amount of LiDAR work being done in Ireland, not just by us, but, but by others. And it's a really, really fantastic resource for all sorts of applications, things like flood modeling, new, new roads design, coastal erosion studies, carbon sequestration, looking at where carbon is sequestered within trees and things. Archaeology, we find that perhaps in the past, we've started building roads in Ireland. We've discovered there are archaelets, archaeological artifacts. Maybe in the past, it's delayed things. And nowadays, the plan is that all of these things are, are considered prior to spades going in the ground, you know? So archaeology, archaeology studies are very, very important. And we pick up an awful lot of archaeology that is, much of it's known about and it's seen, it's been seen and known and documented. But there's a lot of stuff out there that's been collected and picked up that's perhaps not known about. So that's a great benefit of LiDAR. Nice airport shot of Dublin Airport. We did this for the new survey for the new runway a few years ago. And thankfully, that's progressing. Well, we're also able to take, because we were acquiring the imagery, we acquire stereo imagery. So we're able to apply that imagery in, in using photogrammetric processes. And we're able to collect very accurate vector information from it, depending on the scale of the imagery. And again, there must be a correlation between the resolution of your imagery and the scale of the mapping that you're producing. So you wouldn't take, for example, 25 centimeter resolution imagery and purchase 1 to 500 scale mapping from it, because you would be inaccurate. So typically, there is a direct correlation between resolution and mapping scale. So if you were producing 1 to 500 scale mapping, which you might be doing for an engineering application, you would need around five centimeter. Perhaps you'll get away with 10 centimeter resolution imagery. 25 centimeter imagery will produce probably 1 to 2500 scale mapping. And we'll do that accurately. And we can draw it, all the features, the buildings, the fence lines, edges and so on. Taking a step further, you've just applied some themes to the mapping and drawn, drawn in the tree map, which I'll come to. So 3D modeling, we've done quite a lot of 3D modeling around, around Ireland and in various parts, generally on a small scale, so small parts of Dublin, Cork. We did the project for Barry going back just a month or so ago. And typically, again, we'll use the stereo imagery as one of the methods for creating this. And we can do various levels of detail, LOD, if you like. So LOD 1 would be a standard building block. So the building, in effect, looks like a shoebox. It's a very basic way of generating the buildings. And in some applications, that's fine, fairly standard. We have looked at generating that through machine learning and using artificial intelligence. And it does give you a reasonably good result. So you can generate a very basic building block just using an automatic process. Will be some editing to do to it, to tidy it up and so on. But when you move through the levels through LOD 2, where you start adding a bit of roof detail and shape. And then in the LOD 3, which is the most detailed model, so you put in all of the, the windows, dormer windows, bay windows, chimneys, the rooftop detail, that really requires manual photogrammetry to do it. And that's the type of model that we produce for, for Barry and Athanrae. And Adam's going to demonstrate that a little bit more in a few moments. All of these are compatible with, with ArcGIS. All of these are compatible with, with Artis. We can provide them in CAD packages as necessary as well. And then we can add in things like photorealistic enhancements, um, and mesh models and so on. Just to say a little bit about the tree map, we just finished a few months ago creating a tree map for the whole of Republic of Ireland, and we used a combination data sets to do this. So we'll use the imagery, the surface model, and we'll use the four bands of the imagery, uh, to create pretty much an automatic tree map. Uh, so we've mapped, I think, in excess of a hundred and fifty million trees on the island. Uh, all available with, uh, location, canopy cover, uh, tree height, um, and some identifiers in there as well. So each tree has a unique identifier, and that's been very popular. It's going very well. Lot of applications for it, tree management, carbon sequestration, uh, and so on. Uh, there's some examples of it, um, of it there. Just across in the UK, we've been doing a lot of cities using one of our new sensors. We have a like a city mapper sensor, and this is a fantastic sensor for city modeling. And we're hoping, I think, this season to start mapping some of the, the main towns, Dublin and Cork with the sensor. So it's a, a sensor that combines LiDAR with NDR imagery, so straight down. But you also are able to get three hundred and sixty-degree, uh, oblique imagery as well. So you can view any point in the city from any angle at a high resolution. We're able to merge those data sets together and provide 3D, um, mesh models. So those have been very popular. Very popular more so maybe in, in mainland Europe, market's starting to take off across in the UK, and we see it as as really, really, uh, something that'll be fundamental here in terms of, um, creating digital city twins, uh, in the future. So, uh, what's at space? Hopefully, we'll have some cities available in Ireland in the near, uh, in the near future. Um, and I guess that's probably as much as I need to say, at least at this stage, Adam. Maybe that's, uh, a little bit too much, but hopefully, um, hopefully not. And if anybody's any questions, I'll be, uh, happy to, happy to answer those. Have you, you've got it back, Adam? Yep.
Can you hear me, Robert?
I can, yeah, Barry. I can hear you.
Robert, Robert froze, or Adam froze, I think. You back, Adam?
Yeah, yeah. Can you hear me okay?
I can, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, wouldn't be a, wouldn't be a technical webinar if something didn't go horribly wrong, you know, the internet just went bup.
Yeah, I think we're all back though, yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Excellent stuff. And, uh, I suppose I, I just popped out for, you know, five seconds by, my internet had a little moment, we just needed to leave it. But you mentioned, I suppose, Robert, the, the importance of accurate data. And I suppose it's, it's one thing we came across quite quickly when we started kind of, hey, hey, let's, let's build something, right? Uh, that we started to see, okay, well, like our default elevation, you know, half our buildings are going to be submerged. Then can you talk a little bit more about like, you know, I suppose the, the process that we've come up with, 3D looks great, but it, it's not, it's not really meaningful if you don't have accurate data, really.
Well, absolutely. I, I think you really, that's fundamental to what you do, you know, and if you maybe decide you're going to get a 3D model, you need to consider what specification you're going to use. And it really needs to be consistent, one with the accuracy requirements, and perhaps accuracy whilst important. Uh, if you're modeling within a city and you don't maybe need to tie this to anything else elsewhere, then the relative accuracy, so the relative accuracy being a measured point within the model to another measured point, as opposed to the absolute accuracy being absolute to a known coordinate system, maybe isn't that important, but accuracy in terms of the, the elevation model. And where the model sits in relation to that is fundamental. Because if you have a building model with the building heights and the ground model, it's, it's maybe a meter or two inaccurate, then as you've, as you, as you, as you've seen in the model, where you used, I think, the out-of-the-box DTM, you're going to have buildings either sitting up in space or you're going to have buildings, uh, below, below street level, which obviously isn't right. So clearly, you've got to consider, uh, that, uh, as being fundamental to how the model's going to sit. Um.
Yeah.
And I think wh- what we do is we, we will always generate a terrain model from the imagery in a way that is suitable for 3D modeling. Uh, so there's, uh, maybe I'll go into this level of detail, but there's different ways to create terrain models. And if you're doing one for a 3D building model, you have to do it in a particular way that makes sure that the buildings are sitting correctly on the floor.
Yep.
If that makes sense.
No, a hundred percent. And it even goes back to, you know, like when you take measurements off, because we have measurement tools where you can slice and dice a Revit model, you know, you can take measurements along a building. But I suppose the, the one thing to note is that we want it to be accurate from the ground up. And the only way to do that is firstly, acquire accurate data. And then secondly, you know, if you are pulling off measurements, to make sure you're actually using that accurate data, because your measurements are going to be totally off. You know, like we talked about, and we'll show it as well, the, the Revit model, you know, and the great thing about Irish coordinate systems and British National Grid and ITM, Irish Grid as well, is that they're, they're coordinate systems in meters. But oftentimes, kind of BIM modelers are, are working in millimeter accuracy. But if we don't specify that when we're bringing it into a GIS environment, then it ends up as being this big thing along the Bay of Biscay, you know, and your Revit model's the size of half of Africa, the continent, right? Right? So like, I think it's important just to emphasize, like, always kind of QA your data, I think, as well, like accurate data leads to accurate results, right? Accurate measurements.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. As the old adage goes, measure twice, cut once, uh, as, uh, a joiner neighbor of mine used to tell me. Uh, so accuracy is key in all of this and, uh, you know, you, you may get, because obviously with a BIM model, the accuracy there is, is super accurate, you know. Uh, you may get a little bit of disparity between that and the model, but ultimately, I think you could deal with that. If it's just a few centimeters, you can perhaps overseat it a little bit to, to, to move it, move it or whatever, but, you know, that, that's manageable. It's where you have several meters of disparity, then you're going to have a big issue. Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred percent. No, perfect. And I suppose, look, I'll, I'll start sharing my screen and I'll just give, you know, like, uh, how, how we built it up, as with any great story in ArcGIS, we begin life in ArcGIS Pro, right? Uh, and not necessarily, I know we've talked a lot about, about 3D, um, but you know, it doesn't mean that you throw the baby out with the bathwater and say, ah, all my 2D data, I'm not going to use it anymore. I'm all 3D now. Uh, we actually start, start off, I suppose, our workflow in ArcGIS Pro in a 2D map, you know, so I'll start sharing my screen now. If you can let me know when you can see it.
Yep, we can see it.
Yep, perfect. And so this is really the, the start point for us, okay? So it was bringing in, we have, as GIS people, we always have like, you know, I want to say each GIS person up throughout the country probably has a terabyte of GIS data, you know, that they know about. And so we have a lot of data sets, and what I've done here is I'm, I'm logged into my ArcGIS Pro desktop account, and what I'm going to see is I bring in my air code, and, and this is really the starting point, where I bring in all my data, I QA it, you know, I make sure everything's working, the coordinate systems, if there's any reprojections that need to be done, I, I'm doing it in Pro. And also then I need to bear in mind that, you know, the, the 3D buildings, which we'll get to in a second, you know, that's fair enough, it, it, but it is a model, you know, so there's, there's no attribute information around that. So I need to make sure that if I do want attribution in it, where am I getting that from? Am I getting it from the likes of Geo Directory? Am I getting it from Air Code? Am I getting it from, you know, Ordnance Survey Ireland Prime Two data, right? Uh, where am I getting it from? Up north, it's going to be LPS, you know, Ausney. You know, where am I getting all my data sets from? So really what I've done here, uh, which was our starting point, was just to load in available data sets. So I have my air code for ArcGIS. This is every air code on the, you know, in the Republic of Ireland, so two point two million records. And, and you can see the type of attribution we have. Oh, it's actually gone up to two point five. There you go, you know? So we have our principal post town, we have our county, organization name, of course, air code, the addresses, whether something's derelict or vacant, the building use, and this is all coming from air code. And what I might also have is my OSI or Open Street Map, you know, wherever you're getting your building outlines, is, is these polygon geometries. Now, if I want to attribute these ones, it's as simple as going right-click here, join, and spatial join. And what that's going to do is it's going to encapsure any point that's within a polygon geometry. It's going to bring it down. So if I go into air code for ArcGIS, my join operation I can leave as default, it's just joined to one. But if you did have multiple points within a polygon boundary, uh, I can start joining them in. And my different match options that I have here, I'm just going to select intersect. So anything within this. Now, if I wanted to be super rigid, you know, I could say within a distance, which is great for the likes of, you know, tree map, for instance, where you have these kind of point shape files of, of tree locations, that if you just wanted to say within a distance of thirty meters from a house, whatever it's going to be, or I could say contains, but for now, I'm just going to hit intersect and hit okay. What that's going to do is it's going to bring in my OSI Prime Two building geometry and, and join it to the air code, so that when I go into my scene, and i- it's going to allow me to see first the air code and any other data that came along with it. So I might have square footage or anything. I'm just going to stop this. I shouldn't have hit run on it because I already have air-coded buildings in here. Uh, and what I also have then is the, is the tree canopies that Robert mentioned as well. So these are the kind of areas. And the beautiful thing here is that everything's fully interactive, right? If I click on a point, I'll get information. So if we just open this one up, I'll show you what's in it. My computer takes a moment to cancel the task. And we'll also have artificial, um, polygon geometries, right? And this is coming directly from OSI. So I can identify, well, what's a building? What's tarmac? What's, you know, here's the railway station. Okay, so once I have that all loaded in, what I can do then is go to view, convert, and I'll bring it into a 3D scene. And this is really where it kind of starts to take off. So you'll remember that I have my polygon buildings. And they're 2D, they can be shapefile, they can be a feature class in a file geo database. And but then what Blue Sky can provide is this LOD tree, correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, but it's LOD tree buildings. And they come in as OBJ files, right? Now you'll notice as well, like if I click on anything here, nothing's going to pop up, okay? Uh, but what I can do later on in ArcGIS Online is overlay my 2D polygon geometries uh, over this kind of surface, right? And the measurements, again, if I'm using, you know, the, the a highly accurate DTM, if I'm using, you know, my, my LOD tree buildings, I can start pulling off measurements. But I have the benefit of having my attribution as well, uh, from my air-coded buildings. And just to talk a little bit, I suppose, about the type of data, because we're really going, load in all your 2D data first, convert it to a 3D web scene, uh, and let's start adding in 3D data sets. So you can see here I have um, my Revit model, I have a SketchUp model that we'll get to, you know, and I have my uh, buildings as well. And that, that spatial join that I mentioned could be done for anything. So if you have flood outlines, which you'll see in a second in ArcGIS Online, you'll see that you can start intersecting it. So show me all the buildings that are, that are within a distance of or intersect a, a flood outline. You know, you could go in and start joining National Inventory of Architectural Heritage. You could start joining environmental constraints such as special or special protection areas, right, is, uh, special areas of conservation, whatever it is that you need to join, and load in your Revit model. And site scan we'll get to in a bit, because that was, that was what was used to process the, the textured mesh, right? So i- it's not necessarily that everything needs to be loaded into Pro. What you can do as well is create these kind of scene layers from Pro, um, which I'd show you if I hadn't of stupidly, uh, ran that task and it's still canceling in the backend. So while that's canceling, you know, uh, what did I say about a beautifully amazing, you know, 3D product? But we'll, we'll switch on to the 3D scene, and where I can start loading in stuff. And, and really, your 3D scene is, is the kind of, you know, the, the core of it. Do all your quality assurance and quality checking in Pro. As soon as that hits ArcGIS Online, then it becomes pretty powerful in the sense that you have this single source of truth that's made of 3D data sets, like SketchUp models, Revit models, texture meshes, the digital surface, and models that Robert mentioned as well, that have the buildings and the trees and the fences and the lampposts. Uh, but then also your planning area, planning applications, your local area plans if you're a council. And you can have all this data sitting within this place. So if I go in, and, and the great thing is, from a stakeholder engagement perspective, you know, we try and make it as easy as possible, uh, for, for our end users to navigate the scene, right? So like, this is fully interactive. I can, I can zoom in, you know, as much as I want, or I can use the tabs along the bottom. We'll get to the shadows in a second and why they're there. But you can see here from, here I have my layers. Uh, and if you notice as well, uh, this part is pretty dark, right? Uh, so all I'm going to do is I'm going to go up. Uh. Just move the go-to webinar icon. Sorry, it was just on top of this. And, and you can see I have my Athanrye DTM. So just going back to Robert's point, if I zoom in here, you can see it's like completely off the ground, you know? Uh, like, I don't think there's, correct me if I'm wrong, Barry, but there's no houses above lampposts and the street is floating in midair in, uh, in Athanrye, right? But, uh, check what happens when I put on my Athanrye DTM. So that, that's what will happen, you know, because these, these buildings are modeled, I suppose, on a surface. So if you can as well get that surface, whatever was used to model it, get, get that surface into your scene.
Yeah, and just on that, I mean, I played around with a couple of different, and again, it was, it was in desktop that I was working. Um, so it was again using the Ordnance Survey DTM, did a bit of playing around with that and the, um, bit of LiDAR that we had for the town as well.
No, a hundred percent. So there it is again, you can see going in, and you can see that, that ground just shifts up, and now we get, you know, our, our model, and now it's, now it's rendering as well. Great thing about this is that everything's fully interactive from the lampposts. And now again, the lamppost as well, you kind of see, you know, to be totally upfront, right? What you're going to see is, are they pointing towards, you know, uh, probably not where, where they should be. Uh, and that's because we haven't captured the angle of it, you know, so your, your lamppost, if you are doing it, the little head of the lamppost is always going to point degrees to north, which we just don't have in the data set, but at least we have an indicative location. Great thing about this.
Sorry, Adam. Sorry, Adam, just interrupt there, the, what, what is generating. Um, and it's just for people in local authorities who, you know, they're aware that we have so much 2D data, and, um, it's coming from, some of it's, it's, it's managed for us off-site, some of it we manage, uh, but the different sections within the council. And we also use a lot of, uh, other third-party data. Some of it is, um, obviously not publicly available, just available to the councils. Uh, but some of it, uh, is publicly available. And we in Galway County Council, we publish a lot of data openly as well, so for other people to use. So for instance, the streetlights there that came from a third-party database, uh, who have a contract to manage the streetlights on our behalf. Um, so we can take extracts. Now, obviously, this, having this up in the cloud, uh, being able to access services and data through APIs is, is, makes this so much easier. And it's just a, maybe a conversation we need to have with our third parties. And in, in terms of helping persuade them to make their data available in a much more usable way. Because, you know, that streetlight data set is updated probably since I imported it. Um, it would be great to be consuming this data live.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And again, as well, like talking about applications there, you know, it doesn't matter if it's streetlight data, if if it's, you know, water hydrants, if it's CCTV cameras as well, all your 2D data can be imported into this single environment. So what you're seeing on screen here is I just clicked on a, on a house here, you know, and you can see here that I've, that I've got this little turquoise shoebox, right? But I still maintain the detail behind it, but this is my attribution. You know, so you can change this as well. If I click on this house here, it's going to tell me exactly, you know, the, the pop-up for this house, right? So like, information like air code, information like building use or, which means residential, is it vacant? Is it under construction? And what you can start to gather then is like, I mentioned flood risk. So if you want to go in, So if you want to go in and intersect, and again, you know, you do the spatial join yourselves. On the attribution kind of table that you have of your buildings that you're going to overlay. We can start to see down here, close to the riverbed, you know, um. And again, I've just isolated that just to make a, a point of it. And, but you can see here, if I just turn on my Athanri D T M again. Um, but the, the, the flood risk buildings are now in blue. So it's a good way of, you know, me going in and just identifying straight away, well, what's a flood risk? You know, and if I click on this, and again, these, these are dummy layers, if anybody's watching that lives in this area, you know? Don't, don't blame me because I just did a, a dummy flood area, you know? It's a very sensitive subject in Ireland, but again, the same thing can be said.
Sorry, Adam, very, very important subject, um, especially for our planning sections, very, very important. And, um, again, accuracy of data, accuracy of D T M, uh, the ability to do analysis in three D rather than two D. Um, it, it all helps, very much so.
Yeah, perfect. Um. But this, this is not an accurate data set, I should say that. Please don't come after me if you live in this area. Be like, hey, this guy showed my house was flooding, you know? But you could start to see as well, like you can start going in national monuments, you know, I mentioned the N I A H buildings, you know, which are like architectural heritage.
The Seafarm data, the Seafarm study is, is very important, um, and our planning sections would use that a lot. And again, it's, it's just, you know, to be able to get access to that through web services, uh, for integration, it makes all this so much easier.
Oh, a hundred percent. And so you can see here as well, you can put labels on things as well, just because like if you're going from a two D to three D map. People aren't used to reading maps, but they can kind of, you know, navigate around and say, oh yeah, cool, I know this area here, I can move. I could see everything. And then talking a little bit, I suppose, about the, the textured mesh as well, right? So like this is an output from site scan, uh, so that's our full end to end kind of drone processing software. And, and what's nice about this is that like I, I can't start pulling off measurements, you know? So if I did want to rip this in half as well, you know, I, I can't just, you know, use it like a Revit model. And I can pick my location and I can go up and down and see, you know, you can see the shadow there as well, whether it's daytime. I can cut this in half, I can rotate it, uh, or I can just pull off measurements as well and just say, okay, well, you know, I'm going to put on a new slice here, you know? Um, and then zoom right in. And start pulling measurements off, you know, so what's, what's this? And you can see there's an orange indicator there that shows me just how high I am above the kind of model. So if I start clicking here. And zoom across, it'll, it'll start to tell me. Great thing about this is like double F click to finish. And then I can just navigate around the scene. So if you do need to see it, you know, from different angles, okay, it's eleven point six, seven meters. You know, and you can zoom all the way right into the tip, right?
And also do vertical heights, can't you? You can measure vertical heights, which is something that, you know, we wouldn't be used to doing. So what's the height of that monument or what's the height of that wall or, you know, that kind of stuff?
Yep, a hundred percent. You can bring it up and you can see as well, like, uh, at the end of it, if I double F click to finish, I'll navigate around. It'll, it'll in, introduce a plane as well for me to measure against. What's also quite interesting as well is that I can do these kind of elevation profiles from any kind of, um, three D scene. So if I zoom out here a little bit. And let's go to a different area. What I can start to do then is do an elevation profile. So pick a, pick an area, say it's a house. We'll go across here to finish, double F click to finish, and it'll produce a graph, you know, so where's your height? Now, these are just buildings again, um, but I'm sure you take my point. Another area that's quite interesting in terms of measurements then is, uh, producing, you know, these, these Revit models. Okay, so if I just turn on. Athanri D T M. And apologies for that. I thought, you know, I'd be, you know, uh, quite clever and show you half my building submerged, you know? Uh, with the, uh, default elevation, but then when I took it out and put the actual proper elevation in, uh, all my houses went up. And these bookmarks along the bottom, uh, capture whatever layers you have switched on, you know? So that's my own silliness, not a, not a fault on the system. And so you can see here, here's a Revit model, you know, everything's fully interactive. So from everything, from doors to windows. Uh, and if I go on here, you'll see that I, I have now a new kind of button to press, and this is called Building Explorer. And what I can start to do is I can see by default, you know, it's only going to put in architectural and structural, you know? But if I wanted to start putting on, uh, or turning off features, I just want to put on rooms, show me all the rooms in the place, you know? Or overlay a CAD drawn, or I just want to see, you know, what's on level two. And it'll gray out everything else that's not on level two. So I can navigate the scene, I can click on it as well. And what's quite interesting about this is that, you know, as I start to go in, so I'll just like hit X on the Building Explorer, just show me everything, including the yellow rooms. And, but if I did want to go in, what I can start to do now, because I have all my buildings here. Is I can start to do daylight, right? So I can start to see, well, what does this look like? And it'll pick up, you know, the fifteenth or third. But I can start to see what it looks like over time. So for instance, if I have a new development. Um, you know, like a fire station, a hotel, whatever, as a Revit model, and I'm putting it in. I can start to see, okay, well, is that actually overshadowing these houses here? And actually, that's fair enough, what, what it looks like in March, but then we have data from NOAA available. And in your Arc G I S Online account, and I can see, okay, well, July, I want to see what it looks like in July, completely different picture, but then I start playing it again. You know, and you can start to see shadows throughout different years, take measurements as well. So if I, if I want to measure fields, we mentioned, you know, measuring Revit models and measuring three D models. But if I just want to capture, you know, what's the area of this field here, I can, you know? And what's more important then as well is that I can introduce my planning applications. Right? So these are coming from the Department of Housing. And everything is fully interactive, so I can see information about this here, my planning applications. Of course, a lot of councils are going to have this in-house anyways, but the decision's refused. And yet I can see that there's, you know, there's, there's, you know, there's one of five here, so it was refused. It was, you know, refused again, but then it might have been granted. And now I have, you know, new buildings just coming online that's introduced in the attribution. Uh, but they're brand new, you know, this is a brand new code of the data. Uh, so it's in the attribution, you can see the kind of faint shadows there where I'm overlaying the data. And I can see, oh, these, these are new buildings coming online, you know? So you hopefully start to see as well, for the likes of county councils, just the last thing I'll finish on, is I'll add my layers. Uh, and it's just as easy as that. I go to my content to add whatever I need. Uh, or I can go, you know, Arc G I S Online, Barry mentioned that they have a whole bunch of open data as well. If I go Athanri. Local area plan. You know, I should get the L A P for this area, right? So I could see, oh, here's the L A P, two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-one, I could just add that in straight away and I can get more information. You know, so again, like when we're saying this isn't a finalized product or anything, and hopefully it's generating ideas for you. You know, start to see, okay, well, actually I can add in all these other data sets now. The yellow's a little bit too much for me, you know, so what I can do is I can start to go in, I'll click done on this. And I can style it whatever way I want. And so if I go in layer. Style, if I want to change the colors or layer properties, if I want to change the transparency. And let's just bring that up to about seventy-five percent, you know, or maybe fifty percent as well. But the idea here is that everything's still fully interactive, where I click on the scene. Uh, and I'll get a pop up and this is the, this is the local area plan, and actually the status is adopted, zoning is residential. You know, and, and get more information about it. And. So yeah, I think. That's all I have. Uh, if we want to open it up to any questions, if you did have any questions as well, you can put them in the question or you could put them in the chat. And, and look, we'll get an email going as well, but hopefully, you know, i- it's given you some ideas, you know, you can see from my demo. You know, look, it, it's not perfect, you know what I mean? It's far from it. It is a work in progress, you know? But again, hopefully you can see that, you know, you have a wealth of data already, load it into a single environment, you know? Get, the Blue Sky data is great for accuracy and also references, you know? So I can start to see, well, what are the buildings around it, you know? Uh, and everything's fully interactive and then just with a few small tweaks in Arc G I S Pro, hopefully you end up with something that's, that's meaningful to you and your team, your organization. And Barry, Robert, anything else to finish up on or anything you want to get off your chest?
Not really. I think that was, yeah, very useful. I think clearly, you know, it's a good start point. We've done a few of these models, uh, in Ireland, but I think this is the first that we've done for a local authority. And, uh, you know, I think you're definitely starting to see benefit coming through. It needs refinement, a little bit of work here and there. But in general, all of these things can be done, and I think that's the, that's the direction of travel in which we need to be looking.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things we, we just need to bear in mind, you know, a local authority provides services to, to our, to the public. So this is another way to enhance the way we provide those services. So, um, you know, heritage, you know, we, we do a lot of things that, the, the aim of them isn't to make money, you know? It's to provide services, useful information. We have community groups. Uh, out doing surveys of graveyards at the moment. For them to be able to visualize their data within this three D model is, you know, is brilliant for them. Uh, and gives them, uh, an opportunity to publish that data in a way that people, uh, can consume it in a, in a much more, uh. Uh, much better way. Uh, you know, tourism is another aspect, uh, planning. To be able to drop a, a, a planning, a new proposed development within a model. Uh, you know, we have to go out for big developments, you know, we go out and we look for, uh, input from the public. You know, we, we have to publish this information, we have to enable them a chance to review it and come back and make submissions on it. So great way to do that, you know, find your house, uh, here's the new building, here's the impact it's going to have on your line of sight. Uh, here's the shadow effect, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So help them make better decisions too. And, and help us communicate in a better way. So, um. You know, it's, it's, to, to me, I think we're, we're just trying to plant seeds here, you know?
Yeah, a hundred percent. And, and look, you know, the, the good thing about Esri, I don't know if anybody could see this, it's a bit dark, you know? But, uh, one of our corporate values is collaboration and teamwork, you know? So like, if there are any questions from today, like we really, like, you know, we, we said at the start, we'd really like to start the conversation. If, you know, if there's any ideas out there as well, like, um, we'll, we'll pop around an email after this. You know, and if you want to get in touch with Barry and have a conversation, you know, or you want to get in touch with Robert, you want to get in touch with myself or anybody in, in Esri Ireland, we're more than happy to do it, you know? And look, hopefully, you know, everybody will look back on this webinar and be like, yeah, look, you know, God, that, that was a horrible three D model five years from now when we have, you know? Metro Vista for all of Ireland from Blue Sky and, you know, we have this really hyper realistic, you know, digital twin. And, but look, hopefully we started somewhere anyways. Yeah, so thanks Barry and Robert for your time, really appreciate it. And thanks for everybody you joined in.
Adam, just to say thanks to you, uh, as well for this, and as you say, you, you are moving on to a new stage of your professional career. Uh, soon. So just to say again, thanks very much and hope to keep in touch.
Yeah, no problem. I appreciate it. And anybody wants to keep in touch with me, uh, you have my email, we'll pop around an email with Barry and Robert's email as well. Uh, but do try, get in touch, you know, let's have a conversation about it. Might not be a totally amazingly beautiful three D model, but we'll certainly try our best to, to get you in the right direction. Yeah, so thanks everybody. Appreciate it. Barry, Robert.
Thank you folks. Take care, Adam. Take care, Barry. Take care. Thanks folks. Bye bye.